Ms. Gore, will you call the role, please? Mr. Young?
Present.
Ms. Fletcher?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Gates?
Present.
Mr. Beox?
Present.
All right, we are here for a very good reason. And everybody, thank you all for coming. First of all, I have to thank our district staff and our principals and certainly Ms. Mason on all the hard work they've been doing on the district accreditation. What an amazing job, as always. Absolutely amazing. It's my pleasure to introduce Ms. Judy Wesley, who is our team leader, our review leader for Advanced Ed. And also Laura Harper is here. Laura. And also Ms. Linda Sammons, who is part of our review team. And I am now going to turn this over to Ms. Wesley.
I think I'd be loud enough without the microphone, but I'll go ahead and use this. You think? You want me to use this? Okay, I will. Thank you for the introduction. And before I start with this exit report, I just want to thank all of you for your hospitality and all the hard work. I am now a convert to Memphis barbecue. I thought I knew barbecue when I came here, but this was delicious. I've had it, um, two meals, anyway. But just everybody has been so friendly, so helpful, so open. And we have asked so many questions. We've requested evidence. And I'll explain a little bit more in a few minutes about why we were doing that. But again, thank you. And we have two team members who had to leave. Charlotte Fisher is from Tipton County, I think nearby, and Felicia Duncan from Wilson County. They both had other obligations. They left probably mid-morning. I am from South Carolina. And Linda is from Arkansas. The other three are from in-state. With Advanced Ed, now with this new process, they want part of the team to be from out-of-state and part from in-state. And I think it works very well. The lead evaluator always has to be from out-of-state. I also want to especially say thank you to Todd and Rochelle. I started talking to the two of you, I guess during the fall. I'm not sure what month it was. And Rochelle, every night there with dinner, just making arrangements for everything. I know you're ready for us, for Elvis to leave the building. So, thank you for all you've done. And Todd, thank you, too. With Advanced Ed, I want all of you to realize just how important this process is. You have, your district has volunteered to go through this. It's not required by the State Department. These are schools and districts that want to go that extra mile to ensure that they are providing the very best education possible for their students. But Advanced Ed is recognized now, or is involved, in 70 different countries. So you're part of a really, really big process. A few years ago, those of us in South Carolina and Tennessee talked about SACS. And Southern Association is still part of this umbrella. But we had Southern Association, Arkansas had North Central Association, we had Latin America, we had Department of Defense schools, just all these separate groups. It's almost like separate schools within a district. They decided to put all of us under the one umbrella of Advanced Ed. That's the corporate umbrella. But your accrediting organization for Tennessee would still be Southern Association. So when you say, sometimes you'll hear SACS, sometimes you hear Advanced Ed. But it's part of the continuous improvement process. You go through that, the corporation goes through that. We are volunteers. We're all, this group, four former educators and one, Charlotte, who is an assistant superintendent in Tipton. First day, we introduced ourselves as retired educators. And then we started talking. We are not retired. We are working just about every day in schools, in districts. And together, we decided this morning, I hate to say this, especially on camera, but 207 years of experience with the five of us. And aren't even using wheelchairs. So, we are, we came in mostly a stranger Sunday. And we bond very quickly because we've all been trained by Advanced Ed. They are very good about this systemic approach of making sure that we're all on the same page. All of you have gone through this process for the last year, looking at the standards, looking at your indicators, deciding on your rating. You had to decide whether you were a one, or a two, or a three, or a four. One means that it is rarely or never happening. And you know that there were no ones in this school district. A four means that it's happening with all teachers, all students, all the time, everywhere. And then twos and threes or somewhere in between. So that's the rating. And that's what you used, that's what we used. Somebody said once upon a time that the school district is looking in the mirror, deciding on how you're doing. And then they bring in this external review team so that we can look through the window and give you an outside perspective. I compare that to when I was younger and my mother was alive and would go shopping with me, and I would look in the mirror and say, you know, this looks really good. And she'd say, but you don't see yourself from behind. So sometimes you need that outside perspective. And that's what we provide. This slide is important because you have opted to do systems accreditation. I'm sure most of you are familiar with the school-by-school accreditation, where you would do your own self-assessment. A team would go in and decide how you were doing as a school. And yes, the schools had to do that this time, but that was just part of the district process. So what we had to do was look at the district approach, the systems approach, and determine what was happening in every single school. And I know you're going to say, but we're doing that in our school. But remember that we're having to look at that systemic approach. We're also looking at the systematic, is there a process or a procedure to ensure that whatever it is you're rating yourself on is happening consistently? And those of you that went through this years ago, remember, it was kind of like a dog-and-pony show. And you would get the building cleaned up and make everything look good. The team would come in, leave a report, it would go on the shelf to be looked at, maybe five years later, 10 years later, if somebody could find it. Those days are over. We're looking for systematic approaches and then sustainable. Is this something that you can keep on doing? The process that we're going through now really looks at three domains. And I'm hearing that the five standards will probably become three on down the road. We're looking at the impact of teaching and learning. We're looking at the capacity of leadership. That would be standards one and two with your purpose and direction, along with your governance. And then the use of resources based on standard four. Our job as a team was to decide on powerful practices. And let me just stop and explain those. Probably five, 10 years ago, you would hear commendations. And now we say powerful practices. These are things that you're doing that we think other districts should come in and check out. They are the real wow factors. There are some times that non are given because these have to be so special with the powerful practices. The opportunities for improvement, those are suggestions from the team on ways that you can make your district even better than it is now. And they are suggestions. But now the improvement priorities, those are, those are not suggestions. Those are, those are actions that you have to address within two years. As a team, we are required to provide at least one because we know everybody can get better. And then the index of education quality, this is a relatively new term. And you'll hear it referred to as IEQ. If you were like me, in school, if you got a grade, it didn't really mean anything to you until you could see what everybody else was making. And I was hearing at the high school with the Biggest Loser weight thing, you don't know how much you've lost until you compare it to everybody else. So the IEQ, I'm not used to using a microphone. The IEQ is going to show you how you compare as a school district to all the districts that went through this last school year. So it really does give you a way to measure yourself. And then, of course, what you're all waiting for is the recommendation for a presentation. All right, this is what we have done since Sunday. We interviewed the superintendent, five board members, and thank you all for being accessible. And 31 administrators, that's at the district and the school level, 55 teachers, 16 support staff, 115 students, and 13 members of the parent, 13 parents or community members, a total of 236 people that we've taught with. As we heard different comments from different people, as a group, we never just hear something one time and go with it. So that's why we kept going back to people, saying, you know, explain to us more about, well, the iPads, fourth, sixth grade. We were wondering, who pays for those? Then we found out that parents pay for the insurance. So we just follow up on questions. So 236 people. While we were talking to all these people and in the schools, there were certain things that we kept hearing over and over. And one is, this is truly a community-school system. Ms. Mason, in your overview, you were talking about the choice of the name. You wanted community to be part of your name because this is a school that, a school district that belongs to the community of Arlington. The partnerships with the community, the businesses with Chamber, with the mayor, lots of good things going on. The collaboration within the systems between the schools, from one grade to another, between the district office and the schools. The overwhelming pride, the students are so proud to be a part of the school system. The parents have told us about moving here so that their children could be educated in the school system. We heard that from several people. We also heard about the seamless transition from the merged system to the current system. And one reason it was seamless is that your district office staff believed in their school-level staffs. And the district office was able, that first year, to concentrate on operations, getting the buildings open, getting the people in place. And they trusted their school-level people to concentrate on the students and continue that culture of achievement. We also heard about your fiscal responsibility and the soundness of your operations. You have over $6 million in a reserve fund in just a year and a half as a school district. The idea of sharing services with the other municipalities, just a wonderful approach. The utilization of the high school space for offices. You have other priorities. So you were, you were able to make do, get by, by using this building. The mentoring and coaching programs at all the schools. We read about it and we thought, okay, let's see how that works. And then when we were in the schools and we saw that collaboration, and I'm not going to start naming the people because I would overlook somebody, but there is a sense of trust there with the people that you have in place and the classroom teachers. Very impressive. The first domain is the teaching and learning. We looked at the student performance results based on test data from the last, well, you haven't been in existence very long, so the test data that you had. We looked at your learner and family engagement. We looked at the support services. We looked at curriculum quality and also the college and career readiness data. This, let me explain to you. I know some of you were very involved in this. Elliott is a tool that we use for the 20-minute classroom observation. It is student-centered. We score this based on what we see students doing during the 20 minutes, not what's on the lesson plan, but what we see occurring during the 20 minutes. The scores are from one to four. The first column gives you your school district's scores. And principals often ask, can we see how our school did? No, this is the system. The other column is the Advanced Ed network average. And this, again, is based on all the districts that went through this last year. The equitable learning environment, you are above the network average, but, let me get to this page. Probably the weakest area there might have been the differentiation within the classroom, within that 20 minutes. And then the high expectations environment, I think the lowest score there was on the use of exemplars during that time. And the supportive learning environment, we were looking for alternative instruction. We know all kids don't learn the same way. Four is pretty clear, the active learning environment, which deals with student engagement. And five, progress monitoring and feedback, are kids aware of how their work's going to be assessed, are grades provided promptly? The well-managed learning environment, you would expect that score to be high. You know your kids, you know your teachers. Your students were so receptive of us. I was in one class in, it was an elementary school, and this little boy got up and said, let me get a chair for you. That's unusual. Now, the digital learning environment, I know you're disappointed in those scores, but if you'll notice, the 1.82, that's low in all the districts. What we have to look for there is the student use of technology. And it's not just using technology for word processing. The first indicator is about using it for research. The second one is about using it to create original works. And the third one is about using technology for collaboration. So these requirements are, they're pretty up there. And to see all three in a 20-minute period, that's very unusual. All right, moving on into the first powerful practice. I talk with my hands, so I'm moving the mic, I'm sorry. "The commitment to collaboration, both within the system and with community partners, has contributed to an atmosphere of pride and trust, leading to the system's designation as an exemplary school district." We heard about the trust so often. For the improvement priority, we need you to research and utilize challenging and equitable curricular opportunities and instructional strategies to engage all students. So you see the connection with that and the Elliott scores in the previous frame. Another improvement priority, develop a systematic and inclusive process for reviewing and revising the purpose and direction for continuous improvement that results in a meaningful, unifying, systemic commitment. This goes back to what I mentioned earlier. You have four strong schools, but we need that systemic approach. And now that you have the, this language is so different for me, this new school district created, now you can start working on that systemic approach. The leadership capacity, the team looked at those areas, your purpose and direction. And we know the board has been working on that purpose, mission and vision statement, you can call it either, it's the same thing. The governance and leadership effectiveness, your stakeholder engagement, the improvement capacity, and results. There, we use those stakeholder surveys, looking at the percents of people, percent who agreed or strongly agree. And we had no actions on that one. With, sorry. Okay. With resource utilization, your allocation and use of resources, and we've talked about that briefly, the equity of resource distribution to need. And you know, sometimes we hear from one set of parents that one school gets more than another. That was never brought up here. The level and sustainability of resources, $6 million reserve fund, your long-range capital and resource planning effectiveness. We know you have started with your strategic plan. You're moving along. And my understanding is that you're waiting to hear what we have to say to complete that plan. Here, we do have a powerful practice. "The provision of a clean, healthy, and safe environment for students and staff is positively reflected in the appearance of each school campus." We don't use this as a powerful practice very often because you expect the schools to be clean and safe. But you go so far beyond that. Every school that we went in is so well-maintained. And what impressed us is that everybody is buying into it. The students are picking up after themselves. We just don't see litter anywhere. The landscaping, I think, at middle school and high school being done by students to some degree with baby clubs, is really impressive. I mentioned earlier the IEQ. This will allow you to compare yourselves again to other, other school districts that have gone through this. And you will have a score with teaching and learning, you'll have a score with your, the leadership area, with your resources, with your, well, this can be used as a tool. It's that formative analysis that we do with our students to see where they are and where they want to be. And I think this is going to be self-explanatory, and I think you should be very pleased with this. You see the Advanced Ed network average on the right. And you see that in all areas, you are above the Advanced Ed network average. And for many of the school districts that went through this last year, that could be their second or third time going through district accreditation. So you're already above average. We were talking earlier, your goal is not to be average, not in Arlington. And you're already above average in all areas. So with the IEQ results, that indicates that the school system is performing within acceptable ranges as compared to expected criteria, as well as other institutions in the Advanced Ed network. So we are recommending accreditation for Arlington Community Schools. Now, we are the worker bees. We're making the recommendation. The council will meet in June and will make this official. But you will receive a report in 30 days with all our findings. With all of these actions that we gave you, you're going to find half-page to a page of evidence of what we saw, what we heard, what we read, that made us offer that as an action. I say 30 days, maybe it'll be a little bit earlier. So the improvement priorities, as I said, those have to be addressed in two years. This is, it says the beginning of a journey of improvement. You've been on your way to that since you first became a school district. But you're being provided deliberate and strategic actions to ensure that every child, every day, is being prepared and achieving success for their future. So again, thank you all for your hospitality. If you have any questions, when you get the written report, please call me if there's something that's not quite clear. Just call me instead of your state office. I congratulate you on all that you've done in a year and a half. It's absolutely amazing that you have come together like this. You had a dream and it is coming to fruition. So again, congratulations.
Oh, thank you so much, Ms. Wesley and the review team. Thank you so much. Your work is amazing, too. And I would have to say, you definitely are not redundant. Definitely not. We're going to take a pause and let our guests leave, if they need to, get on the road, back home, I'm sure. And we, again, appreciate you very much. Ms. Mason, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you. As we talked before we met, that this information and feedback that the team gives us is invaluable to us, especially as we begin our journey and really starting to pinpoint and make us unique. And this will be very beneficial to us. So thank you for your thoroughness and your attention to detail. It will benefit us greatly if we need to. Thank you so much.
And then I was there for the merger. I was there with Senator Norris, writing the legislation that let you be a municipal school district. And, you know, kind of come full circle, coming back home to you guys. But I don't think you really realize what you've done. I mean, I know that you've been in the trenches. And so when you're in the trenches, you know, you forget about how hard it was to get where you are. And I told Mr. Young there, I felt like I just had a baby or something. I mean, it was like, oh, yeah. All this happened. Well, anyway, this inter-local agreement is a piece of that. And not just what we had to do to get it, but because of, but because of, you know, what it really says in terms of our community and where we're headed, and also, of course, Lakeland community. So I'm going to go through this agreement rather quickly. And, but I say it with a full heart to say that I just want you to be so proud that people would even want to be a part of your school district, whether it's short-term or long-term, in terms of all these Lakeland resident folks. So, in any event, the first section really has to do with the termination of the agreement that you have now with Lakeland. Because as you know, that agreement was anticipated to last longer. But because Lakeland decided to open up its middle school earlier, that agreement wasn't particularly relevant anymore. So we had to figure out a way to wind up that agreement. And so the first two sections talk about what the penalty is to Lakeland for effectuating an early termination of that agreement. And so what it provides is that by July 1, 2017, Lakeland will have to pay an early termination fee of $99,955.13, and then also have to pay the same amount by July 1 of 2018. Now, you know that the Lakeland Middle students will be with us next school year, but as you see, that termination commences after they leave, and after the middle schoolers leave. Now, having said that, I don't want to leave the impression with anyone who's here from Lakeland or even with our own family here. This agreement does not require that in future, once Lakeland opens its middle school, that we would still not be accepting of Lakeland middle school-age students. However, those students would have to go through the non-resident policy acceptance process. So I want that to be extraordinarily clear because I'm afraid that there's been some misinformation about that by either people's reading of drafts or just frankly gossip perhaps. And then for next school year, they would also continue to attend our schools. And then for the high school level students, for students in grades nine through 12, that they would be guaranteed enrollment during the entire life of this agreement, however long that it is. So then that gets us to the funding piece. And of course, it won't surprise you to know, because you're all so versed in the law, is that money follows the children, right? So the state and the county money and the federal money follows a child when that child is enrolled in any particular school district, right? So that would continue. Now, again, in terminating the agreement from where we were, we had to figure out a particular number. I thought it was very important to put a particular number in this agreement as to how much we would be owed for the balance of this school year, right? So for the balance of this school year, but yet using the terms of the old agreement, we'll still be receiving $210,000 by May 1 of this school year to finish out last school year, all right? Now, for, on a go-forward basis, for those students who remain with us from Lakeland, by May 1 of 2017, for the 2016-17 school year, and every May 1 thereafter, we would now be receiving something we did not receive under the prior agreement. And that is, we, this time, under this agreement, will receive the full per pupil expenditure that Lakeland spends or receives from the city of Lakeland for their students. So what's happening under the present agreement is that Lakeland taxes their citizens, and what they're doing is, is they're only giving our family a portion of that per pupil expenditure to educate their students. So their students that stay in Lakeland get X amount, and their students who attend the middle school and high school, because they don't have one, receive another amount that's less. So under this new agreement now, everyone gets treated the same, all Lakeland students, or receive the full amount to which they're entitled. Now, the last part of the agreement is the part that, of course, is concerning to most folks. And that is, what do you have to do to terminate this agreement? And one of the things that was not in the prior agreement was a termination that could occur by either Lakeland or Arlington, right? The other agreement talked about termination by Lakeland. But there might be an occasion where Arlington might want to terminate the agreement under the terms set forth, as you can see in front of you. And so what it provides is that either party, either Lakeland or Arlington, can legally terminate the agreement once the Lakeland and Arlington populations totals 2,100 students. Now, right now, we have, of course, we have Lakeland students, Arlington students, and then non-resident students attending the high school, right? Well, under this agreement, it's only the Arlington and Lakeland total population that has to turn to 2,100 to trigger the termination, okay? And so here's the example, I'll just read it out loud, so if it's unclear, otherwise, I think the example's clear. If during the seventh 20-day attendance recording period of the 2017-18 school year, the total Lakeland resident and Arlington resident student enrollment at Arlington High School exceeds 2,100, either Arlington or Lakeland can terminate the agreement, but effective at the conclusion of the 2019 school year, okay? So what that does is, is that if you're in a particular school year, and you find out at the end of that school year that you've hit the 2,100, they still have, either of us still has to provide two full school years of notice before the agreement terminates. You see, in the prior agreement, it was not particularly clear as to when that first year kicked in. Was it the next year after the first year that, you know, somebody wanted to terminate the agreement or not? So this makes it very clear that either party should have two years of notice. Now, additionally, Lakeland can exercise the option to terminate the agreement if the non-resident student enrollment, or I'm sorry, that the entire enrollment at the high school exceeds 2,150, all right? And so that really enables either party, frankly, to make a determination as to whether or not they want to go forward with the agreement after 2,150. Because the only penalty, if we exceed 2,150, is that Lakeland can terminate the agreement, right? I mean, so, you know, whatever penalty you think that is. So anyway, at the end of the day, if Lakeland breaches the agreement and terminates the agreement prior to the 2,150 trigger or prior to the 2,100 trigger, so in other words, they just randomly say, hey, look, we want to terminate this agreement. You're not at 2,100, you're not at 2,150, but we're tired of being in this. See what I'm saying? Then that's a breach of the agreement. So what are the damages? The damages are that they have to pay us 24 months of that per pupil expenditure that Lakeland pays out for its students in the full amount, not that little partial amount that we talked about before that we have been presently receiving. So that's the, you know, that's the long and short of the whole deal here. I don't think that, I don't think it's, you know, all that complex. I don't think there are any tricks in the agreement for either side. I think that it gives parents an idea as to what they can expect, which, let's face it, at the end of the day, other than, you know, our staff and our teachers, obviously, that should have the opportunity to know what the heck's happening to them, our parents and our students ought to know what's happening to them. And so this hopefully makes that extraordinarily clear to them and leaves no doubt as to what everybody's rights and privileges are. Does anybody have any questions?
I do want to just add to make sure that it's clear that the students that are included in this, it's just not middle school students, it's all K-8 students, so those elementary students that are currently assigned to Donaldson from Lakeland. It includes those students as well. So in essence, all K-8 Lakeland students then will be with us under this agreement with guaranteed seating through next school year. And then after that, they are more than welcome to come on in non-resident, but it's just not the middle school kids, it's all K-8.
Right.
Just wanted to clarify that.
That's right. And then also clarify, too, the 2,100 and the 2,150, though, only relates to the high school population.
High school population, correct.
Anybody have any questions?
Are there any questions from the board members?
Ms. Young?
No, I was going to say point of order before we talk about it. This is a voting item, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we need to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
In a second before we can talk about it, correct?
Yes, sir, that's right.
That's true.
Madam Chairman? We've heard the recommendation, the superintendent, and we have a motion.
Madam Chairman?
Ms. Young?
I'd like to make a recommendation, improve the interlocal agreement between the city of Lakeland Board of Education and the town of Arlington Board of Education.
Second.
All right, you've heard that it's been moved to second. Is there any discussion at this point? All who's in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion's carried.
Nice job, by the way. Very good job.
Madam Chairman?
We're going to work on this.
Right, right, right.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just, I would like to make a statement, and I know it's after we voted on it, but I would like to say that, and I was able to talk to Ms. Mason and Ms. Valerie about it, but great job on putting this together. You know, I was able to tell you both, I not only feel that this protects us, this protects Lakeland, it not only protects our students of both municipalities, but it also protects our teachers of our municipality, too. And I'd just like to say thank you all for the hard work that you all did.
Do you still work on it?
That's okay.
Do you not know they're, they've got their electronic, he and Gina, so they're waiting to vote electronically on this.
Maybe get the Jeopardy theme on there.
The next, the next, that will upgrade is the high school.
That's right. We're moving that right over.
Wasn't that Kevin's committee?
Yeah.
We've got it this time.
Madam Chairman?
We got it?
Yes, we did.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chairman?
Ms. Young?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All right, all who's in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.